Welcome to the planning board meeting for our first 2023. Planning board members.
All in part.
Here.
Or Coke is not here yet. Amy Pennington.
Here.
Heather Rogers.
Here.
Don Walters.
Here.
Richard Yeager.
Here.
We have a forum on our meeting agenda tonight, we have three joint public hearings with the planning and development committee and committee of the whole. And then we have a public hearing on a halo business park at 21 Malcolm White Road. And then under general business, we have a request for the lease of covenant extra lane. And two requests for extension of fire approvals at 17 Malcolm White Road and Queen Stanley Tucker Drive. And group this and other updates for the chair. So I'll turn it over to the chair of the planning and development committee. Open the air portion of the public hearing.
Chair, I'm Ed Cameron, and I'm the chair of the city council budget. That was a couple of terms ago. Not budget planner, planning and development committee. And I'm joined by Councilor Wright, Mark Wright. And we are two of the members and we're joined remotely by Councilor Preston. Two, two of the items that will be discussing have also been posted as media for all. These are the two ordinance related to the planning board memberships. So we have other counselors who are also joining us remotely and they'll be allowed to speak if they can speak during that session. And we will also hear from Councilor Polly, who's the sponsor of the first ordinance that will be entered. Suggested amended zoning ordinance that will be filed in our council. It is also there. So that's it. So I had to follow up on our city council portion of the joint hearing.
Thank you. So just to begin with, Councilor McCollum. You've been in the proposed amendment to city code to move the allowance of ITIF special permits for residential use.
Thank you, Chair. This is ordinance 135 and it's it's a follow up to some conversations that the planning board had that I was privy to regarding Market Street. And in, in that, what we found is that the original intent of adding residential to this was open to too much interpretation. And I think it went beyond the intent of the original document, right? And so my attempt here is to tighten up this doc, tighten this up so that there's less less pressure on the planning board to offer a creative solution after the fact. And I think that just removing residential from this discussion. I think, I think commercial is very valid, but just removing residential from this part of the discussion is cleaner. And I think it is more along the lines of the intent, which is not to subsidize any residential development without parking. We know that regardless of if anyone pays into the ITIF, they don't, they don't get a spot and we don't create more spots. It's just a, if you will, a bit of a penalty to help ease the pain at the time. So my intent was to cover just residential uses going forward to remove that from options within this duck, within this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Before I open this up to the public hearing, I'd like to ask if any of the planning board members or members of planning development have any questions or comments about this proposed amendment?
Yeah, just, just one question. Just for my on education, I'm just wondering, is there an accounting for how the funds are spent on the ITIF funds? Does that go towards upsetting the funding on the garage or is it just improvements to the lot and maintenance? Is a lot that kind of thing?
The planning director, I don't get involved in it, but I, my understanding is that it covers our, it covers both bonded for the garage but substantial expenditure of that account as the construction. But also to supplement the downtown program. So out of that downtown program, the garage is okay for, I don't know how that picture is.
I, I believe it goes into the paid parking fund.
I also have a question in terms of, is there any cap as to how many of these could be allocated? I know that they're not designated spaces in the garage per se, but is there any sort of recognition to the flow would look like this with this many of these being given? Is there a cap to, okay, now we've extended this, you know, on the point where this is not reasonable?
There isn't a cap in the zoning here. And this is one of those things, I think, the council would plan where they revisit around here over time depending on what scene, but the ordinance today does not make free cap. Whether or not the council wants to add one or we can certainly discuss that aspect here, but there is anything zoning and I'm not aware of anything. On the other night, your recent conflict, mainly on the fact that residential parking over parking overnight is restricted in these blocking facilities in such a manner that if I have a problem allowing special permits, those reduce those locked and residential permits.
Just one more question about that. So is a thought to like if it's not designated parking per se? Is there any thought to, well, if, if let's say 16 of these permits are given, we understand that usage would look like acts, in other words, like so many cars are going in and out on a flow and therefore really only occupying six spots generally? Keep track of things like that in this?
The parking clerk, Doug, he keeps track as best they can of who's parking there. I think it's of course things like that. I don't know that they have that fine degree of information. Looking at for our parking plan, it was staff, but I don't think they have that finding rate of that particular area of information, if maybe possible, to collect data like that, but I don't know that we have that presently.
So I think that so I think we all have to keep in mind that this is a, this is a payment into a fund that doesn't guarantee you a spot in the garage or anywhere in the, in the parking system. So so basically a cap on it is really arbitrary because there's no requirement to park in the garage if you pay into this fund. You're still in the wild, you can park wherever you can. So, so that's something to keep in mind that this, with the funds that are generated from this don't have a requirement, nor do they have a spot necessarily in the designated parking spot. So it's just money going into the fund to offset the expenses of the garage and the parking system in general.
One more question is if a property is sold, does this deposit, the fund transfer, it's been a sale or is there another requirement for the new owner to then take on another set of deposits?
So the, the way that generally speaking it works is folks were grandfathered for use at the time this ordinance was first adopted. So any users that were there based on what they needed. There are just obviously the downtown, they don't have, you know, necessarily parking, they rely on municipal parking. For instance, for a long time. So there was a grandfathering essentially for what was required for zoning for those uses. Generally speaking, and it was basically such that on a go for basis, if you have the same park or private status quo, but it increased because of the change of use, let's say, and you have an increased demand for parking based on the change of use. Then have to create an incremental increase of what your parking demand is, John, what your essentially grandfathered for was your finding. So it's eventually added depending on the change in use. So we have a zoning administrator here tonight. You can effectively have to look at the uses of all, verify the parking and then once in fact grandfathered for the use and then add the gap there without paying for it and this one and this little term would have to create a fund for it.
Right. I think just to follow up on that. If there's no change in use, then the ownership changes, there's no addition.
Okay. So whatever happens now is going with the
Right, right. Yeah, it's what there's no change of use is not an issue. If it's a change of use and it doesn't actually change the parking ratio or it's not an issue. It's only a very increased value there.
The other question to comment about the void would and
Thank you. Yeah, I just my recollection of this and I, I've not had a chance to talk to Councilor Polly of the intent of this, which, which I appreciate. I was one of the sponsors of the original ordinance in 2017. Although I will claim 0.0001% brain power because it was Councilor Igram's idea. And if memory serves me, this, this was prompted by situations where a new development or a new use was being proposed for, for structure parcel. And that developer was able to claim access to, you know, closeness to municipal parking in order to, to just fulfill their, their parking requirements. What it's what is now known as the Black Cow was there, I think the Ale House. And it was a new 400 seat restaurant where it had been that, you know, like auto parks place there and turned out to be a fabulous restaurant, I think. But they're quite often, but that, that caused quite a bit of stir and I think there was fear that if other types of commercial use were brought in and they just claimed, you know, either the garage and garage, everything proposed or other municipal parking is covering their own parking requirement. And then we were kind of jammed up with you know, just, just a direction not of parking. So at least having this, this fund created gave an allowance that you know, we're picking some money for the city to do as it as it needed through the parking program to find other use and maybe that would buy another surface spots or or creating additional parking. So that's sort of a proposal. I, I don't recall a lot of conversation about the residential piece here. So I, you know, I, I, you know, we'll talk about this certainly with the, with planning and development committee after this joint hearing and we just got some more information. I'm curious exactly what, if anything, has spun into this fun. But for me, from a kind of a more strategic 30,000 foot level. I, I, I want to, I want to not pivot residential downtown. I think we could use more people there. I mean, we, you know, we, we talked patiently about growth and, you know, growth promotes our own backspace, but we're a small city. Not a lot of developable land and and also a place where we don't have a lot of year round residents frequenting our shops in winter time and, you know, and I'm you know, so I, I'm somebody who there's not a lot of parcels downtown that I think would be converted into a lot of residential uses, but, but there could be. And I would don't want to just stop that that it's racks, but yeah. So I think my, my question on this, and I don't know if this is Councilor Polly or a member of the planning board or or Director Court, you know, how would the world look different if this, if this passed? So if I'm a developer and I want to put up 30 units of housing and there's a couple of, you know, less, less used parcels downtown, I suppose. I'm under this, I, I would, if this change went, well, right now, I could buy, couldn't provide my own parking. I, I would pay into this fund, but if this, that option goes away, then I have to provide it all onsite or make some other arrangements.
Correct. Yeah, you can demonstrate that parking is available in some way, but you'd have to provide it on a private basis. The first using the public parking lines or the zoning limits.
So that was
So, so Chair, if, if I, if I could respond to that as a, as an answer. In, in your scenario, it, you know, leaving leaving, leaving 30 units of, let's say, parking for 30 units downtown. Paying into this fund doesn't guarantee them a spot. They would still be parking on the street. And let me just remind you, there is no overnight parking in any of our municipal lots. I know we don't enforce that, but that is our rule. Our, our rules are there's no overnight parking in the garage except in the monthly spot. There's no overnight parking down in the former NRA lots. There's no overnight parking in the Green Street lot. And, and those are our, our rules. So what, what we've effectively done is thrown all of the parking while they paid for it. We've effectively thrown all the parking onto the neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for recognizing me. So after hearing Counselor Cameron's comments, it, it sounds like we are extraordinarily like minded on this, but I think what I heard was that this was a request from the planning board and I'd like to hear from someone on the planning board as to why they're making this request in particular.
It hasn't come as a request from the planning board. Counselor Polly responded to the amendment. However, there was a recent application for two to six market street where the issue was illustrated proposed here on the planning board and Councilor Polly had titled this one the nights of that hearing. Where there was discussion about the fact that in this instance, the developer had originally proposed, if you're familiar with that building, new building down at the bottom of Parkview Street at the bottom of the Blue One Bridge and Market Street. That building was originally proposed to have stacked parking and mechanical lifts. And the developer came back after building the structure and indicated to the board that they would not be able to provide the lifts. They had not worked out, you know, rating or slopes and so forth. And while that was later revisited weeks and months later and the developer agreed that they could in fact put the lifts, they had to make some adjustments, but they put it back for the party on site. What that pointed to would make the cause of concern about of the further playing with numbers or counselors as to their, you know, preferences or concerns. But the concern there in this particular instance was that the developer had proposed originally to provide all parking onsite for the residential uses. And utilize the ITIF special permit only for the commercial component. And then something that said, you know, I can't provide all the residential parking. I want to provide all of that parking by just paying into the fund, you know, that $7,500 you know, to that index increase. And so that, if it's illustrated, at least some of this issue went over to others here, both by words and council on visual and preferences as well as policies.
So that in particular, that was the example that was in my mind as I'm thinking, I'm, I'm hearing the discussion and to me, you know, I certainly understand why we want to make sure that something like the development at Waterfront West was not able to use this as relief. Um, but at the same token, when we're talking about smaller developments like this, it, it seems to me like this is the perfect way to use the garage as relief for those sorts of things. But again, as Counselor Cameron said, we can have this discussion within our planning and development committee. I yield. Thank you.
Yeah, by the way, I'm pretty busy using the microphones. It helps if you're really close to your, as well if they're far away.
So I think the, it's important to recognize that the, there are two different things that regulate, I think it's been referred to. The ordinance itself relates to how much are the what uses can be exempted from the parking by paying into the ITIF. But it's a separate issue. I think it's council policy as to whether anybody could actually park in the garage as a result of that. And I, and I think that's a, that's a separate city council policy issue that's different from this particular issue relating to zoning. One question did come up today that I saw an email about what residential means in this context. Because I guess the zoning ordinance lists the number of uses that are classified as residential that maybe you may necessarily consider as non-residential. I think maybe there's only obviously I want to speak to that. That's the things for the point that is raised.
Hi, Jennifer Montchay. I had just made the request for clarification within the body, within the language of the ordinance to clarify the intent. I think the intent was not to prohibit hotels, bed and breakfasts and other such commercial uses under this residential category, despite the fact that they fall under the residential section of the use table. And Councilor McCully did confirm that it was the intent to only apply this residential label to single two and multi, single two, multifamily, and then over 20 units. And I believe also in law apartments. The others would all still be considered commercial and be viable for use in the ITIF.
So do you think that that could be verified by using the words residential dwelling unit? And somehow in the, as those uses that are, would not be allowed to hold uses?
Perhaps, or to specifically just note the the uses that are still available to it, or conversely, the, the ones that are intended to be excluded.
So in some way, we could need to amend this to specifically as a bunch of this.
Yes, I, I could. I, I heard out of his point and I technically agree with that, that there's a distinction here even though are the zoning ordinance and the report lists under residential, some of the other uses that are quite like really commercial in nature for the residential. We could add language that doesn't necessarily address the floor here, but if there's a clear on that policy, you know, or clarification, then it's consistent with the policy that, that is made by the proposed ordinance chain. Then we could essentially amend that, you know, maybe, or at least prior to the brought out of the floor by the city council to add in. I would suggest referencing these particular use categories, just knowing including whatsoever as to what a resident is. Because sometimes, you know, you see sort of different interpretations. I would suggest it's listing up the uses either by number or by, by, by their titles.
Any more questions before I open this up to the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Please come forward, state your name. Give us your advice.
Good evening, members of the board and city council, Lisa Mead, 13th Purchase Street. You're speaking as a resident, former elected official and somebody who has some history with the the parking in the downtown. For those who don't know, and I'm going to look at history here beyond what Counselor Cameron said. One of the reasons the zoning in the downtown works so well is because we have residential units mixed with commercial units. In fact, the downtown zoning is the envy of many, many communities across Massachusetts because it has an economic driver built into it. And many communities have tried to emulate that zoning. Before the change in addition to the ITIF, the basis of the zoning is that if you were within 300 feet of any municipal lot, regardless of the use, you could count that parking. Because as you can imagine, when they recreated the downtown in urban renewal, all of the lots along State Street, none of them had footprints on their properties that included any parking. They had to use municipal lots for parking, otherwise they couldn't develop the lots, whether it was residential uses or commercial uses. And indeed, I was also involved in the permitting or actually didn't actually represent the applicant at the time, but the permitting of the, what is now the Black Cow, which did generate a lot of concern about, well, wait a minute, if there's going to be a huge economic benefit to one particular entity by taking advantage of our municipal lots, they ought to help pay for those lots. It wasn't that they couldn't count them, but they ought to help pay for them. Which ended up helping to be an economic driver for the parking garage. And that was all great and certainly understood by everyone. The way this is drafted, it would essentially freeze residential units in the downtown as they are today. And I don't think that's a good idea. And I'm going to give you an example. I'm not related to this project at all, I mean, to this property at all, but I happen to know, everybody knows the Arthur Page Building on State Street. That business has been there for a really long time. What if that family decided to sell that building? What if whoever bought it said, well, it's a better economic deal for me long-term to have business on the first floor, which by the way is required, and turn the second two floors into apartments? They wouldn't be able to do that because they couldn't provide the parking to do that. And so you automatically limit the turnover and economic development. I would suggest to you that in fact, some of the reasons the turnover has slowed down in the city of Maryport is because people have to think about the cost to pay into the ITIF if they come in with a more intense use in any of their floors in their buildings in the downtown. So that is what it is, but to prohibit by not allowing somebody to take advantage of the municipal lots in the downtown residential development is actually turning back zoning without resigning. And I think it's a big, I think it's a big mistake. I would also caution you, caution you that all of those buildings down there are mostly mixed use. So I don't know what we're gaining here because are they defined as mixed use? Or are they defined as single and twos? Well, first of all, you can't do a single or two family in the downtown. It's not allowed, right? And maybe you could do a multi-family, but you can't do a single or two. You certainly can do hotel, lodging house, rehabilitation residence, things like that. Hotel, I can tell you a couple of places, would be part of places on State Street or boutique hotels if the economy ever got in that position. But you couldn't do it if the zoning wasn't changed or that made more specific. So if you eliminate one or two families, that doesn't get you anywhere because you don't want to have those anywhere in the downtown anyway. And then you're taking away multi-family, something the city desperately needs. Because they'll need more parking and you won't let them park anywhere because you won't let them participate in the program. So I just think, and I concur with Counselor Cameron and Counselor Preston, that you all ought to really take a break here because this isn't just about paying play, so to speak, in parking situation in the downtown. This is about the use and economic drivers of the commercial aspect of our downtown. And it's a much bigger picture than having too many buddy, too many people in the parking garage, which I would suggest to you is not an actuality on a regular basis. But it doesn't matter because it doesn't give somebody a right to park there as everybody has acknowledged. But I really think this is a much, much bigger issue than just paying into the ITIF or special permit. To prohibit any additional residential parking, excuse me, residential parking essentially in the downtown would lock the current residential status of the downtown in place, period. And you can't take buildings down because you shouldn't because they're historic buildings and now we have the DOD as well, right? So it's a really big picture. And frankly, I question whether or not the use is residential or it's mixed. Right? We have a mixed use. If you are commercial and residential, then you're mixed use. You're not, you're not multi-family, you're not two-family, you're not one-family, you're a mixed use. That's the definition. So I would ask everybody to step back and take a look at this because I don't think it actually accomplishes what perhaps the counselor wants to accomplish. Thank you very much.
Can the Chair, if I could comment? Just one point that I have, if I don't consider anything that's maybe just recognizing no, my comments were just made, a grandmother use may already have an allocation, parking that's associated with that use. And so it may not be, you know, impossible or that as much of a burden as it's being suggested to make a converted of a use if that parking is basically going to offset. You give a vital part is being offset by his grandfather there. So that's a big one to consider, I guess.
That's not what this, that's not what the ordinance says. You can do that, right? So if you say So if you say, let's say you have two, you have commercial use on the first and second floor and a residential use on the third floor today. And you want to change the second floor to a residential use. And you have enough parking where?
The question is, what do you think grandfather in us zoning, which goes back to the original idea of amendment that was adopted by the council, I don't know.
Right, to guarantee that parking. So the question is, does the commercial use have the same parking requirements for the residential use that you put on the second floor?
Jennifer, did you want to add to this?
If I could, this, this is a, it is a concern. I think there's been a bit of confusion on it. Um, there is language in the existing ordinance that addressed the status of a property uh, as it was in two thousand seventeen, at the time that this ordinance was adopted. It says that the spaces, for the uses that existed at that point, as best they can be determined on assessing records, would be grandfathered to that count, that intensity of use as attorney needs suggested. So commercial spaces on the first floor have a more intensive parking requirement than residential uses. Right now, most of the buildings that we're discussing downtown that might be converted to a residential use on the upper floors are office uses that have a per square foot requirement of parking spaces, which in every analysis that I've done so far, yields a higher parking count than would a residential parking requirement for, be it single two or multifamily. So everything I've seen that goes in that direction from commercial retreating back to residential has a lesser demand and therefore would not have an additional requirement, would not need to utilize the ITIF. So where there is a concern for new lots, as, as was suggested, these vacant parcels that might be developed, that's where this would have an impact. Uh, I don't believe it has the impact that's being suggested in the existing structures intended to be reutilized, such as the structure that, that, that's existed. I, I did have the opportunity to look at that one a few years ago when the owner came in and sort of asked, and, um, unless they're doing really tiny units, you know, little single room units that have a, a really high demand, I, I don't think we're going to see the, the type of issue that's suggested except on undeveloped parcels. So, and, and even then, the mixed use would allow the commercial component to tap into the ITIF to make a payment into it. But it would, they would, under this amendment, need to satisfy the residential component onsite or in a private lot offsite. Thank you.
And if I could just wrap up, then that's, that's my concern, right? So that's my concern. So until somebody does an analysis, you start at the top of State Street and go down and look at the number of buildings that potentially could have new uses that includes significant residential uses or any of the ones that are currently included that you may exclude hotel and lodging house in property or bed and breakfast. I, I think it's a big move to make quickly without a proper analysis of what the current parking requirements are and what the parking requirements could be if the top two floors or more could be changed into residential. I just think for the purpose of protecting the parking garage, you ought to just slow down and do a proper analysis on it.
Thank you. Anybody else, uh, from the public hearing just to be heard on this? If not, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board and the committee. Are there any comments at this point about how to move forward?
Since the, since a request from the board was invoked, I don't know where the source of that was, but I can say as one member of the board, I would not be in favor of seeing this kind of admission about parking restrictions. I'm, I'm newer to the board and seeing the ITF, I, I've only seen it, really practicing with two applications. The one that was cited in some detail was actually resolved. So I think that's just kind of off the table. So for me, I, I would hate to see restriction on residential uses. I think attorney needs um, ones were very, very sound. So that's where I am. So it's probably good.
Anyone else wish to honor? Uh, I guess I'll just say that my personal stance is I am always in favor of lower parking requirements. Not probably more than acceptable or to anybody else in the city. Um, so, uh, I, I, for more flexibility, rather than for less flexibility, I would, I would like to see uh, lower commercial parking requirements as well. That's probably not realistic, uh, in this environment. So, um, you know, I, I guess, I, I'm kind of persuaded by attorney need, uh, that we should maybe step back and look at the impact, what, what properties need the impact of that. We feel that probably most of the existing, um, nineteenth, early nineteenth century properties along State Street would probably not be affected because as Jennifer said, you'd be going from a higher parking department to a lower parking department, that could be from office to residential. But on the periphery, uh, and on scattered lots around the downtown, this could impact the ability, um, underutilized lots to be redeveloped. And there, and there are a few say, single-story uh, buildings, um, with a huge or whatever that, um, you probably like to have. And you're not like them, this, uh, it's not completely involved. So I'm kind of tending toward either holding on until we have more information or, or, or being opposed to this.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm interested to know, um, just the number of entities that have participated in the ITIF and the timeframes, two thousand seventeen, I think that would be informative um, for all of us to know. So if that's something you could, um, maybe pass along to, to this finance director or something that you might know?
Sure, we, uh, we could circle that. The details on those applications, probably like that, less than five, it's, it's, it's a handful. Um, market street now, in, in, uh, market street, where was another, uh, but it's got a very small usage of that.
Yes, I'm truly not suggesting paralysis by analysis, but I do agree that that more analysis, and I would add besides the existing structures we have, I think it would be informative to myself to understand that a couple of these vacant lots that we're talking about, it's not obvious to me that there can be some form of development there. Perhaps it would not be as intense because it needs to be more square footage of the, um, the surface for parking, but then less, that I, I'm going to go through this analysis existing. I think it may be red light also to take a look at some of the vacant lots. If, if, just understanding, thank you.
Yeah, so for, for my part, I agree with what, uh, Mr. Wright said. I think getting a little bit more information would be important. And yeah, the, you know, zoning is a place where we want to tread carefully um, because it's very hard to back, uh, back out of it, um, can be done, but I, I, I certainly think, you know, from a broad public policy perspective, I think we want more people downtown, living there, visiting there. Um, and there is limited space. And while I, I hope a sentiment for lower on parking requirements, and I know that's, that's definitely a trend in, in across the country and, uh, you know, if, if that makes a lot of sense to me in general, but, but in, in the specific instance, I, I like to be very careful. I know how controversial parking is downtown. I've got a few stars still from pay parking and garages and other, other related endeavors. Um, I appreciate, uh, Council McCully raising this. And I think that, and also I think I'll I'll move back to any, any email or things that were written back in twenty seventeen, what, what we have for us today. So I think for, for the council, I think we certainly have another um, at least one more meeting on this and trying to get a rest tax, more interesting, what, what the change would do and if there's any other intent. Bounce it by accident, so, you know, that going ahead.
So here's what I was just intending is to move on. Um, I, I think possible to, for the planning board to close the public hearing and to request, and not to, not to get action, but to request further information in, in terms of data on ITIF and some analysis and some of the, some of the lost downtown, just to get a sense of what the index could be. And then, um, move this off to a future meeting in which we could look at that, that, that again. They're making decisions about that. You know, you know, it makes sense, any?
Oh, for that, there's a chance we asked another committee, but that's out of the way. Like a development committee as well, and that's a bad, prior to the by development committee, providing recommendations back to the council, so that you're aware of what could be taken down.
But I guess, yeah, I think, I think you're going to, you're going to continue with any of them.
Yeah, I, I, I think I go to my, uh, council colleagues here for, for any recommendations. I mean, if we closed our portion, um, if you don't close your portion, then I think that you would have to be again. Um, I, I, you know, I, or, or we could close our portion, you close our portion, the council maybe just, just works it out.
Sorry, Counselor Cameron, could I be recognized?
Sure, go ahead.
Fine. I, I know it's hard to see my hand raised. Um, is it, it's a firstly, I want to, um, let's say thank you to those that have offered an opinion on this. I mean, ultimately, you know, I, I, I view the role as advisory to the administration and to the council and, and your opinions are really important to us. So I appreciate those of you who have commented. Um, one other, the information, um, so following on to Counselor Wright and Counselor Cameron. I agree that, you know, more information helps us to make better decisions. So, um, not only understanding whom has already paid into the ITIF, but also if we could get a listing of what those vacant lots are that could be developed. I mean, as I think about the, the downtown, it, it, it seems extraordinarily limited to me, but perhaps I'm very wrong on that. But so if we could just get some sort of listing of what vacant lots could be developed that would fall into this category, that would be helpful for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so procedurally, um, in terms of how to handle this, you know, closing the joint hearing, um, you know, the council committee could continue to work on this and just, you know, bring it to the full council or, or not. Or, well, they would need to go to the full council, whether it's a you know, in favor of it or opposed, um, and signal it that way, or if we kept a joint hearing, your joint hearing open, uh, I think we are trying to schedule for early April for a joint hearing.
Uh, the nineteenth, I think, for that, you would, the nineteenth.
Yeah, so I, I don't know, we could go either way.
I think the planning board, since we haven't had much more discussion, the planning board, right? I think I would actually look for a motion, but I think we could probably close our hearing tonight, but not make our recommendation until the subject will be does that, in order to get that information, so we don't have to bring it back to a, to a hearing again. And I think they're putting it off to the fourteenth, I mean. That, that worked for you? So, um, I guess what I would request is a motion, first of all, to close the public hearing for the planning board. And then a second motion to they actually don't need, even need a second motion, just continue the discussion. So, yes, so Don, you're making motion? Yes, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um, I'll call the whole then. Holden?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, yes. James?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Don? Richard?
Yes.
And Rick, yes. So our public hearing is closed and we will bring this back to, to a future meeting.
Okay, so should we close our, um, so the public hearing and?
Or with that, yeah, you, you know, we have before and then situations like this has closed public hearing, uh, and they kept it the, uh, further analysis, the, you know, for, out the word, you was how, so as you can, pretty sure, but um, that is what we're, is, I hear them more, recognizing that, 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 but also recognizing that they um, were making the recommendation for council, like, uh, one way or another.
I'll, I'll leave to close our portion of the public here.
Okay, uh, is there a second on that, Council President?
Second.
Okay, um, any further discussion on that? I'll have a roll call, um, starting with Pete Preston.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Amarin, yes. All right, so we'll vote our portion of the public hearing back here with the, uh, to be continued.
Thank you. So the next, uh, two items on the joint public hearing are two related, uh, items, which is an amendment to the closing, to the general code and a closing amendment, both of which relate to the number of, of members of planning board. And this is something that we have proposed to the planning board in order to, uh, deal with a couple of issues. One is that um, we require a two-thirds vote on special permits under state law. And there could be situations where, uh, we need a short member is either because of vacancies or conflicts of interest, dispute recusals, or more numbers that definitely are available for meetings. And so you don't want to get into the situation where an applicant is having a difficult time having enough damage to vote actually on the application. So, um, we're proposing these two, these two ordinance would, um, change the planning board makeup in the following ways. It would, uh, over time reduce the planning board from nine members to seven members, which, uh, by itself would change the, uh, required, uh, quantum for a special permit vote from six, probably goes to five. Um, the second thing is, uh, important along with that, we'd be changing, propose to change the term of membership of planning board members from five years to three years, so that it's uh, perhaps less of a burden facing people and easier to accrue members. And then the, the final thing is to authorize the appointment of two associate members to the planning board who could fill in if, uh, the planning board, certain planning board members were absent in order to vote on a special permit. Uh, I think these three things are really, again, they're all intended to help have a full planning board and to have enough members, uh, to always be able to vote on a be able to have at least a possibility of a permanent vote, in terms of, uh, a special permit application. Uh, now, right now, under state law, these are all things that are, that are the, the associate members are specifically authorized under state law for special permits. And, uh, zoning board already has this in place. Uh, there's actually a bill in the legislature right now that would expand the, uh, use of associate members to all types of other, uh, planning board, uh, actions, such as site plan approval, for example, some of these. Uh, we're not there yet, but I just want to keep that everybody to know, it's something that could be coming up, uh, in the future. Uh, so I guess I'll open that up for any questions about what we're opposing to do here uh, and what the effect might be and if there are any concerns that anybody might have on the board or on the city. For the council. So, Professor Preston?
Yeah, thank you. I, I just, I want to be certain that I'm understanding what you're, what you're requesting here. So, so the idea is to move the membership of the planning board from nine members to seven members, but allow for two associate members that could potentially fill in when you aren't able to reach a quorum due to either absences or people that need to reuse. Is that, in simpler language, is what you're suggesting?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your.
You are correct.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Sorry, I yelled.
Oh, that's for Tom.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I guess my question on that is, uh, is that? Done in other communities? I guess I never heard of the associate role and I was, and if you said something, my apologies. I think the audio cut in and out when you did your opening. And the second point on this one is in terms of the modification to reducing, it is something I always heard, uh, that. Was a desire to see this change happen. And so while I welcome that, I I do wonder by creating the associate need. How has traditionally, and and I'm guessing this is why the the desire is for this, is that it's been hard to to make a quorum? And so I guess maybe some background and context on on other communities and how that's handled.
Well, um, in Newbury Court, we actually have this in the zoning board right now. Um, and the and the purpose is not so much to achieve a core. As it is to achieve, to achieve, to make sure that we have at least the required two thirds. Uh, member of the full body. Um, in case, in cases of a special permit application. So, um, right now, with a nine member board. We need six members to vote positively in order to approve a special permit. Uh, if we went to a seven member board. We would need five members to approve the special permit, plus we would have two associate members. Who could fill in if, uh, members were, if we didn't have enough members. To do that. And and the idea here is to not have a situation where a member. Comes to a meeting and then, sorry, where an applicant comes to a meeting. And finds that there is a risk just because of who's in the room. That they would would not be able to get a positive vote. Uh, so it's done, um, in many other communities, it's specifically authorized by the state statute. And we're only doing here in Newbury Court. Um, for the zoning.
Chair, if I could add to that comment?
Yes.
So the question was asked if it's in elsewhere, and I have pointed out in the past, the example that the Boston Landmarks Commission has associate membership for that very reason. And it works very well. They also have an expectation that associate members. Attend the meetings. And they'll find out that evening whether or not they are voting or not voting, but they stay relevant to the content and. Provide the the critical mass that's requested.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. And and so it really is more about conflicts, if I'm repeating this correctly. If there tends to be some conflicts and they cannot participate in the vote?
Either including conflicts or it could be vacancies in the board. Because even if you have, uh, even if we had two members missing from a nine member board. He, uh, still need to have six members vote positively for a special permit. So it's not two thirds of the member, the actual members that we have, the two thirds of the total members that are that are authorized by the, uh, by the. Or the city ordinance. So even if we had, uh, seven members. And right now we have eight members in our board, even though it's a nine member board. So if two of those, if two of those members, um, were. Two of those members were absent and one had a conflict, for example, we wouldn't be able to approve any special permits. Uh, so it's just a matter of being able to fill in the seats. When there's a vacancy or a conflict or a member is prevented from voting because they had missed previous meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alden?
It's not, just one question about the mechanics of that working. Uh, in a situation where there were the seven, seven members of the board and then two, um, alternates, associate members there. If there was one person that had a conflict. Uh, accused or whatever, would you only bring in one of the associates? That's not, not anytime a special permit is being called for, that both associates will come in, for example.
Right, the the way the ordinance is written, uh, is that the chair would, uh. Find the actual. Words here, but the chair can designate. A member to fill in by finding that you're worthy.
I put this the very last.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, it's a different, different state, that's why I've not seen it. Yes, so it says the chair of the planning board may designate an associate member to sit on the board. For the purposes of acting on a special permit application in the case of absence, inability to act or conflict of interest. On the part of any member of the planning board in the benefit of a vacant board. So it would be, uh, the chair would designate a member to join. Access.
Yeah, I I'm I'm generally supportive of this, certainly, showing the the term, uh, to three years, uh, five years. Long time as we know, and, um, you know, let me also take this as an opportunity to thank the members of the planning board. You are a very hardworking board. On meetings, um, and, uh, you know, I think your your expertise. May not always seem appreciated by by, uh, members of the public, um, but but it is very important to the. And the successful functioning of our, of our little city, um. You know, my, um, my personal experience with this, I served on the ZBA for two years. I think it was a year into it when it dawned on me that some of us were associate members and it's been less than regular members. Nobody really explained that to me, but, um, but that did work quite well. Um, and that that board is smaller. Um, but, you know, we we have a number of absences and then people we need to catch up on and and, you know. Certified that they have either, that they have watched the recording, they listened to the recording, they were, they may have missed that. Definitely not a video, um, in order to participate in the next meeting on a particular matter that had been discussed. And so I think that did, um, that was, that was good for that board and, uh. Yeah, there's nothing worse than something, something big coming up and and you. This, you don't have enough people. So I think this simple adjustment. Uh, of the associate members, um, you know, is a way to have a. You know, that the, uh, the super majority requirement a little bit lower, but you're still having the same number of bodies that have been voted. And if that happened, I'd get a decision one way or another, so I think that makes a lot of sense. And would be, you know, before, whatever happened before the full council was on the side, we got to like. Do a little research and figure out if somebody in one of. Area planning missions knows how many inspirations are actually remaining, this sort of thing, that that would be useful to me. But I very approve of concepts.
Thank you. That's right.
I'm I'm just curious what the term, uh, current term of the ZBA appointments are.
Yeah, I.
I think there's three.
That would agree.
Three years.
So it makes sense to synchronize those. To boards.
Counselor Preston, do you have anything else?
Or yes, I do. Um, so, um, I would just like to echo, um, Counselor Cameron, Cameron's comments. Um, and and just thank the planning board as a whole. It it really does seem like one of the most thankless, uh, committee. Appointments that one can take on and and I realize it's enormous amount of work for you guys, um. With a lot of conflict at the same time. Um, the associate position, you know, I it it seems to me. Uh, that it would just be something very hard to recruit for, you know, you're essentially looking for the. The same level of commitment from someone and they only get to vote. You know, irregularly, but if it's working in other places, I certainly have no evidence to suggest that it wouldn't work here as well. Um, and then thirdly, to, um, follow on to Counselor Wright's, um, comments about, you know. Uh, at least following along with ZBA in terms of how long the term is. The only thing I would suggest is to be certain that those terms. Don't all coincide. I think the worst thing we could ever find is. If the entire planning board went away, you know, if all of your terms were three years and you were all in the same three years. And all of you went away at the same time, I think that would be, uh, a world of hurt for Newbury Court. So, um, I I I think. Again, as a a board that is, you know, ultimately pretty thankless. Having shorter terms is probably helpful from a recruitment standpoint. But just making sure that you you have staggering in terms of where your terms are. So. Otherwise, I yield. Thank you.
Thanks. It's a question, um, and maybe I missed it, either what's been said or what I'm requiring. I think the way the ZBA works is, um. You know, there are whatever the number, I can't remember how many members are. Um, plus two, seven. I don't know. Let's have five more. It's five plus two, okay, so. And the super majority in that case is four. I mean, four, four votes. So the 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 two associate members, when there's a vacancy and and membership. Full membership, one of the associates, whoever's more senior moves into that slot. And then, and so the next person brought on to the board is an associate member, the new person who comes on is an associate member. If there's another vacancy in the regular membership, it's so they have to lose out. So to Counselor Preston's point. Um, you're you're not a permanent associate member, you you it's kind of, um. Almost like a farm league, I know, minor league, which I think it helps with onboarding, because they're. Unless unless you're steep in. Land use or either ZBA or planning board. Um, you're you're gonna, it's a learning thing. You know.
If I go to the chair, uh, they may want to speak to this.
I'm just gonna answer that, to say that you're correct, that that's sort of, sort of, sort of a quarantine, but the. In fact, you would have to have a new appointment by the city council. It's not automatically about the associate, the associate, associate is appointed and. And moved by the city council as an associate. And then with that associate, you should move up to be a full member. It will be a new appointment by the mayor and the city council.
The other thing I was gonna add is just that I think the chair, yeah, has been trying to locate those, you know, associates, you know. Um, and recognizing, um, that this is a central opportunity for someone who might need to report against experience. A board, LA itself, a full level where they're constantly doing other things as opposed to, you know, directly, not an active basis.
Okay.
Right, but I think the point you made, Counselor Cameron, is very good, which is that essentially, because. You may not know when somebody is an associate or member, it's really a nine member board. That really has a kind of requirement of five weeks instead of six months for approving a special permit. Any other comments and questions on? Planning board members or councils? If not, I would open up the public hearing if anybody wishes to be heard on this, on these two proposed, uh, ordinance amendments. Yeah, if not, I will close the public hearing. Okay. So. Do I have a motion from the members of the planning board about the hearing and the recognition?
One question, are we going to recommend? Ordinance one thirty seven, because that's, there's only, we're at one thirty six general ordinance in that question. Necessarily coming out, so I think our recommendation would be one thirty seven.
Any good? Yeah, uh, there's only a statutory requirement for the planning board to weigh in, there's only a piece of it here, but obviously there's a. Still, it's a significant issue before I get to, to, to grab a bill. To add to recommend adoption of both, because we actually have kind of my vote in there, it's a system, so.
We don't, we don't have to recommend a one thirty six.
Right.
So I guess my preference would be there a single version of the.
Okay.
So is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. I'll just do a roll call on that, for closing the public hearing. Alden?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And Rick, yes. Okay, now a motion, um, I would like. To have a motion if it's agreeable to recommend approval of both. Ordinances, uh, one thirty six and one thirty seven.
Yes, sorry, just a cheerful point, uh, did you want to reveal, uh, the, uh, what's, I was sure there's there. There was one screen there, uh, in there where the, uh, president paid chairman as opposed to chair. I think we just wanted to recommend to the council, uh, do that as a form of, right, that just chair.
Yes, in, uh, in ordinance, uh, one thirty six, section two dash one one eight. Uh, we wanted to change elected chairman to elected chair, just to be consistent with everything else. So that would be a minor amendment to this motion.
I only have one minute.
So, can I have a a motion from the planning board? Yes, is there a second one? Thank you. So, uh, quick, um. Roll call on that. This is on both, the both ordinances. Alden?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And Rick, yes, thank you. So, um, sure.
And, um, would, uh, do you want to do a motion, uh, to report, uh, preferably the, uh. So we have two ordinances, one so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make motion to, uh. To recommend approval of ordinance one thirty six and one thirty seven to the full cast.
Second.
With, with the second, with the scrivings are.
Yes.
Seconded by.
Second.
Okay, great. Um, any further discussion?
None.
We'll do a roll, we'll do a roll call on Counselor Preston.
Yes.
So, right?
Yes.
Amarin, yes, so that would be three to zero in favor. And, uh, I'll make a motion to close our portion of the joint public hearing.
Same.
Okay.
So moved.
From, uh, Counselor Wright, seconded by Counselor Preston. And so we'll close our, um. Return of the public hearing, uh, roll call, Counselor Preston.
Yes.
So, right?
Yes.
Amarin, yes, so three to zero, we vote for the public hearing, and, uh, thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing. For an application to complete this road and site plan review for Hale Business Park LLC. For the property of twenty one, not completed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think there's actually two parts to this, um, application this evening, right? We have the completeness review, we might recall you're doing that at this meeting, and then. Um, the actual application itself. Um, so for the record, we submit, we tell them across the thirty Green Street on behalf of Hale Business Park LLC. With me this evening are Craig Pacina and Patrick Reddy, who are the principals. Uh, Steve Sawyer is online, he is the engineer on the project. Tom Hughes is the wetland scientist on the project, and my colleague, Ryan Cummins, is also here with us this evening. So for the completeness review, Andy, if you could go to the first slide. Um, we have provided, um, to the board, uh, a set of plans, which includes all of the ten, uh, requirements. Um, in the ordinance, uh, for cycling review, applications for major cycling review. Uh, we've also included, um, the swamp water report. Um, we've included the, um. The, uh, lighting, uh, fixtures as required. Uh, we have also, um. Included a waiver letter that requests a waiver from a full traffic report. Um, we have provided a traffic memo, um, however. We requested a waiver from a full environmental and community impact report. Uh, we are, we have been actually working with the conservation commission for about a year on this project, so. Um, obviously, that's, um, a part of this discussion, but we. Had requested a waiver from the full report, we have included environmental information in our filings. And we've requested a waiver from the requirement that a landscape architect sign the plans. Um, given the fact that all of the plantings are in, uh, what in and around wetlands. Um, those are all being, um, designed and, uh, by the wetlands scientists in conjunction with our work with. The conservation commission, but we do have that planned tonight, it just won't be signed by a landscape architect. Um, and as a result, I would ask the board find that the application is complete before we proceed.
So we need to verify the application, we need to.
First, a waiver is. Yes, uh, the opposite, no objection to that.
So, so I have um, I have no objection to that, but I have a couple of questions that I um. This, in first thing is. The uh, the city's tree ordinance. Uh, I I would like, I think I would like to recommend that we grant a waiver from tree ordinance. In recognizing that there's landscape plantings on the site, but we're not actually providing street trees. Does that, does that make sense?
It it does, except that I believe the tree ordinance only applies to special permits and um, variances, and this is a site plan review.
Um, it it does, there is a capture of this in the site.
Okay. So I think it would be appropriate to grant that waiver.
Just just so we don't have to worry.
Sure, that's fine.
And um, and then uh, when we get to the actual. This doesn't affect the waiver room, but um, I am going to request a separate landscaping plan. Not signed, but not signed by a landscape architect, there's just a plan right now, there's. There's so much going on, and I would like to have a separate landscape event where those those plantings are are pulled out and cleared. Um, that that's not for right now, it's just going ahead. So then, we would be looking, uh, the first request would be for a a motion to grant. The waivers from the complete environmental report, complete traffic study. The signing of the landscape plan by a landscape architect and the street treatment, is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, can I, is there any discussion about that before we move on to that? Okay, can I have a motion to grant those waivers? Second?
I'll second.
Second, thank you, okay, I will um, do a roll call over that, um, Alden?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Uh, Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Rick? I'm writing it down. And I'm sorry, I I did that pretty quickly, I remind me if I don't ask for discussion. Although that seems pretty clear, so then the next motion would be to find that the uh, application is complete. With those waivers, is that correct, Andy?
Correct.
Uh, can I have a motion for that, and thanks. Don, thank you, second? Okay, uh, any discussion? Okay, um, roll call, Alden?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Richard? And Richard?
Sorry, I couldn't unmute myself fast enough, yes.
Okay, moving right now.
Thank you, um, Andy, I think you can go to the, go to the next slide, and then the next one, please. So this is an application, uh, members of the board for um, an industrial services building located in the corner of Malcolm Boy Drive. And Hale Street. Um, as I said a little bit ago, the applicant has actually been working with the Conservation Commission. Uh, for about a year on this, not every meeting, but um, on and off for about a year. Because a portion of this property, as we're going to describe in a little bit, a little over five acres, is actually going to be. Deeded over to the Conservation Commission. And as you will see shortly, um, a significant portion of the property is in wetlands, and so we've had to work closely with them. Um, we've also been in front of the zoning board of appeals, um, because of the wetlands on the property, we've had to move. The building up into the front yard setback. Um, and uh, the zoning board appeals gave us a variance um, to do that, and so we have received approval from. Uh, the zoning board of appeals. Um, the proposal is to build a uh, building that has a footprint of two thousand eight hundred eighty square feet. On this property. Um, and um, we are putting it on a portion of a lot, which I'll show you in a minute. Um, which is just over an acre at fifty-four thousand five hundred and twenty square feet. Um, where the ordinance requires fifty thousand square feet um, for a lot in the industrial park with two hundred feet of frontage. Uh, the remainder of the parcel, which I'm going to show you, which is lot um, eight four in a moment. Includes um, almost five and a half acres of land, uh, which will be donated to the Conservation Commission. Uh, the commission has opened its notice of intent hearing, we've been before them a couple of times. They've continued it until we have this hearing to make sure that you're okay with the layout. Before they finalize um, their order of conditions. Um, so as I said, the building includes a footprint of twenty-eight hundred and eighty square feet. Um, it requires six parking spaces, um, Rick, close your ears a little bit. Uh, we're providing fifteen parking spaces and two handicapped parking spaces, so that will be seventeen spaces, which actually is appropriate. Um, for this building, because there's no other room in the lot.
So the slide where it says fifteen is required is right now.
No, there's six, uh, does it say fifteen is required? I apologize, no, there's, that that slide's incorrect, there's six parking spaces required. For this, but there are fifteen spaces provided for two handicap spaces. Um, the fire department, as you're going to see in a minute, and Steve will review, has required. Two means of egress on the lot, so we have to go around the lot no matter what. Um, and so we're adding parking parallel in the back, and you'll you'll see that in the layout, it's not like there's extraneous parking being provided. Um, the other thing which I'm going to show you in a minute also is, um, this building kind of acts as a transition. Between the residential properties across the street, and then the industrial uses both behind it on Malcolm Boy Drive. As well as further down south on um, Hale Street. And so the building is actually quite modest for the industrial park, and is only twenty-five feet tall. It gives the appearance of a residential structure from the front, you'll see that from the doorways that we have. Um, momentarily that Ily graph um, design. So if you go to the next slide, please. So as an overview, and then um, I'm going to turn it over to Steve, but as an overview, this is the entire parcel. So at the top is Hale Street. Um, at the left is a industrial services building, but that's on a different lot. And so the lot that we're looking at in the area to be developed is actually the front where you see all of those squigglies, right? Those are all various wetlands markers. And everything to the rear is going to be donated to the Conservation Commission. Um, and so with that, Steve, um, we have the um, this overall site plan. Then the A and R, and then the regular site plan, so I'm going to turn it over to you to review all three of those plans.
Okay, good evening, Steve Sawyer with GM two. Um, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, um, so yeah, so. We're actually um, constructing a new three-unit, uh, three-unit industrial building, it's going to be in the upland to. Just to the east of the um, existing industrial building. Uh, and with that, uh, I had actually permitted that other building back a few years back. This is similar, basically the similar use of of that structure. Um, just much smaller, it's about a third of the size, so it's very small. Um, actually, there's a lot of residential buildings that are bigger than this, but due to the commercial application, we're brought in for full stormwater and such. Um, and as you can see, where you can see the subdivision of the of the parcel. Uh, Andy, I don't know if you can trace that line, yep, so. I've not, yeah, okay, there we go, so that's a piece of land that's going to be conveyed to the Conservation Commission. It's probably, um, I don't know, it's probably seventy-five percent wetland, twenty-five percent upland, there actually is a large upland area associated with it. Uh, with with that parcel, so I think we can just jump on to the the next slide. Alright, so the site plan, it's a, it's a post, you know, very small lot, uh, or very small development, I think the disturbed areas under a half acre. Uh, very simple, so originally, we had provided just one entry, uh, one entry and exit. On the left or the west side of the parcel, wrapped around, and then, so we had parking on the west side. And then parking in the rear, and along the back of the building. There's three garage doors located there, so they'd be similar to the um, similar to the other project next door. That would be as far as any uh, construction vehicles or such that needed access, would they be parked or parked in. Uh, access behind the building, so it's shielded from any residential view from the front. And then we provided the two handicap spaces as you come in on the left. Um, with the normal, the the, a- any access from visitors and employees could. Uh, also come in from the front where there'll be three doors, uh, with a concrete sidewalk running across the front. Front of that building. As part of the um, zoning review, the fire department wanted full access around the building. Um, so we did, as we, we ended up kicking the building a little bit to the west. And then they only needed a one-way, they said just one way would be fine, so. That, um, the eastern access is exit only, uh, it's a sixteen-foot wide, which which they felt was more than adequate for their truck to negotiate through. Sixteen-foot wide uh, exit only. Um, so that was done um, as part of the the fire department re- review. It's, there's water and sewer, so there'll be a fire and water service to the building, uh, also a six-inch sewer service all up, uh, serviced up to Hale Street. Um, and then as far as the stormwater, the stormwater, uh, it's a fairly small. Structure, and as you can see, we actually have quite a bit of stormwater management for the size of the structure in the pavement. Uh, so what we're, what we're proposing is to have most, almost eighty percent or eighty-five percent of the site. Flow to the rear, it's all um, low-impact design, sheet flow, it's going to flow back to that. Area that's the, I, um, it's a four-bay area where it'll provide the pre-treatment. From that location in the rear to the east, there's a larger constructed stormwater wet- wetland. Um, that's where the water will be detained, treated before it's discharged. This is a similar, um, because of the high groundwater in permeable soils. In such the, the constructed stormwater wetland made the most sense for as far as stormwater treatment. Um, and then in the front, actually in the exit, I did have to install a small, on the exit, uh. Because of the grade back to the street, I do install a small catch basin, which uh, collects the. Collects some stormwater and directs it to the rear, and then in the entry area, the entry and exit, the main one, I uh, provided a small. Rain garden area to to treat that. There is a small, you know, of course, the aprons that are on city property, we can't collect and treat that. Because that's just, that's typical of any project, we, um, the aprons on in the city way. Um, but all of that water actually flows along, there's a swale, you know, there's a swale that runs along Hale Street. That would provide treatment, um, treatment to the um, stormwater prior to discharging. Um, so in that, uh, that that's the only item, um, only area that wouldn't be uh, fully treated. I did receive some comments from Phil Christensen, um, I'm gonna, you know. One of, one of his comments was that I need to split, you know, it's such a small area. Everything flows around to the east, that low wetland area in the, in to the east and to the rear of the property. So I just considered it one drainage area. He wants me to, he's asking me to cut this site into three separate drainage areas. One of the drainage areas is only one thousand square feet, which seems a little bit too ticky tacky for me, but I will do it. Um, it really doesn't, it won't change too much, it won't change much of the um, stormwater. The stormwater that I'm providing um, for for this project, but um, I will be updating the calculations to. To meet his uh, comments on that. So uh, I think that covers it on the site, uh, as Lisa mentioned, we have fifteen spaces along with two handicap. Which is ample for the, ample for this project, uh, probably more than we need, but we really don't want cars having to. There's really no opportunity for cars to park on Hale Street, so we have to be, uh, we have to make sure we had, can cover the parking for this facility on site. And um, I think that that, uh, I think that covers it, um. I think we did provide planting around the building, uh, I think there's some eastern, I think, um, Tom might be able to chime in. Yep.
See, Tom, yeah, Tom's here, he'll go over that.
Okay. Alright, so I think that that covers it on the civil, and I can answer any questions, Tom can, Tom can talk about the uh, the trees, thank you.
Um, so as Steve said, we have to continue to respond to Phil Christensen's peer review, so we're going to be back anyway, so I. Uh, that would be fine to provide a landscaping plan as well. And just to follow up on that, so in the industrial park on these lots, you're allowed to have thirty percent lot coverage. Uh, this lot has five point three percent lot coverage, right? So um, you know, there's really a minor use of the entire parcel for obvious reasons, and I'm talking only about. This lot, not the whole parcel, so you're permitting a site plan review on this new parcel, I think it's eight-four on the site plan. Um, it's, your back lot is being transferred. So the front lot is what the site plan review, which will become uh, twenty-one Hale Street. Um, so with that, do you go to the next slide, um, please? So I just want to show the elevations before Tom goes over the landscape plan. Um, uh, here's the elevations in the front, you can see, as I said before, um, it looks more as a residential form. It's only twenty-five feet to the mean roof, which is, you know, below even our residential height requirements. Uh, it's got doorways that are residential size in the front, and obviously the windows are of a residential nature. Um, and then you can see uh, the end elevation there, go to the next slide. Here's the rear elevation, so here's where the garage doors are, um, where people are going to be able to get in and out of the building, um, for the appropriate use. So um, I think the. If you go down to the, yeah, go down to that slide right there, is that our, no, go back up to the. There you go, and then maybe Tom will talk about the, and we'll provide more detail as you indicated.
Thank you, Liz. Good evening, Tom Hughes with Hughes Environmental Consulting, um. I acknowledge where this thing's up on the screen, it's kind of tough to see the planting, so we certainly will get you something that's clearer to read. Essentially, what I did, uh, most of the site, except one small area in the top left, is in the buffer zone the way. So site-wide, I honored the uh, typical call to have everything be a native species, the. Conservation Commission looking for it, but I also tried to look at the area along Hale Street. Look as if somebody might, might be landscaping in front of a residential building, to kind of achieve that same look, so. Along the um, the Hale Street area, there are six red cedar that will be going in. And then off in the upper left on that plan is a tulip tree. Uh, tulip tree is for you guys who may not be familiar with, it's not used a lot, but it's a fantastic tree. It gets a lot of size, it's great for storing carbon long-term. Um, and it's just a real pretty tree once it gets established. Along the uh, left-hand side on the edge of the parking, it's all uh, cornice flora, which is a, a dogwood. And uh, it's a flowering dogwood, and then I mixed flowering dogwood, wood into the other plantings that are. In the areas that are closer to the weather, kind of at the bottom and then off to the right, there's a couple of those flowering dogwood in there, but I also have. Hibiscus blueberry, red maple. Um, there's uh, cranberry bush, which is by burn. Um, and winter berry, and winter berry. As you may be aware, it's the one that has the, the red berries all over it that lasts through, at least the first part of the winter to the year at the moment. Uh, but it gives you a nice, pretty look. Um, the hibiscus blueberry have a really nice red in fall, so it's not only kind of a wetland plant, but it also looks decent around this. And then behind all of that is kind of the massive nature that's already on site, so we're kind of merging from the. From the uh, the development site back into the buffer zone that's in more of a natural state. So overall, I I think what we have is from Hale Street. Really decent-looking landscaping, and then from the parking one, really decent landscaping, and then as you get closer to the wetlands. It's, it's good-looking, but it also merges in, um, so people like me think it's good-looking, but also normal people think it's. Probably the best way to put it, so um, with that said, you know, I think that. I can work with Steve to basically turn off a whole bunch of layers, and we can brighten up those plants, and I'll put some planting tables on any center. Um, I noticed that the dogwoods are sized at one and a half D B H, but typically when you purchase those. They're either a gallon size or a pint size, we'll change the size on that, but we're looking to put in some pretty decent-sized. Dogwoods along the border, I think it'll be a great looking uh, amenity, and again. Can't emphasize enough, this seems like house size, this is not like a big industrial park development, and. I doubt you get a lot of plans in here at twenty-two. So it may look big, but this is the kind of scale I typically go to conservation, mission, in single family home. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, I was gonna go through the criterion performance standards, but we can just take questions. I've submitted all that information, so that's up to you. The redhead.
Chair, I had a question.
Uh, just one quick question about the parking. As it's laid out, if what I'm seeing is parking on the backside of the building.
Right, there's some parallel parking spaces along the path. That's right.
I'm just wondering if you're over the parking requirement, whether it's really necessary to do that and whether that would be more room for. You're you're over the parking.
We have one, two, three, five, five parking spaces.
Yeah, I don't think it. Lisa, should I chime in on that one?
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I really, it, that's, I think we need to be very careful about it. I I would, as we get, removing parking might be problematic, I guess, in the event that. I really don't, I want to make sure we have it covered. And we do need the. Yeah, that area in the rear would probably be used for construction, I mean, we're not sure with the tenants, but. Most likely, it's like a electrical contractor or somebody like that. Where they may park one of their vehicles back there or to get access in and out of the garage. I do want to keep. As much pavement in that rear area as possible, pro- possible and practical. And I think removing, it's only seven, it's a seven foot wide by twenty listed as four twenty-two foot spaces. We also have the trash. Uh, trash back, trash containers located back in that area, so. Uh, I I feel uncomfortable about trying to skinny up that back, that back area.
And thanks very much.
Okay.
I was just curious what the rationale was for. Uh, the variance to bring the building closer to Hale Street. I think it was in the neighborhood of twenty some feet versus. The normal sixty foot setback. And the adjacent building just to the west is obviously set further back, so I was wondering what the rationale was.
The rationale is because of the wetlands and because the wetlands located on the other side and in the back, so it was a soil condition. And frankly, the zoning board kind of liked it because it took on more of a residential feel because the residents next across the street. Are about the same distance.
Understood. Thank you.
Any questions? Yes, I, I. I'm a member of the energy advisory committee and. The committee, and it's also noted in a nice job of avoiding it without. Being energy efficient. I would just say if if the applicant would like any advice, especially with the. Inflation Reduction Act that perhaps provides additional incentive rebates, I think they want to reach out at the energy budget bidding. I'd be happy to give them a contact or two. They'd be very happy for no charge to provide the engine here. Richard, you still have another question?
No, my apologies. I just lowered it.
I had a couple of things. First of all, I do like having a building closer to the street and what that does for the appearance of it. I had a concern about the driveways because, as you know, we're looking at. Making improvements to Hale Street, very likely widening Hale Street within the within the existing right of way. We don't know what the what the plans are at this point, but I'm wondering whether the driveway even will work. If you, and also, I have a similar question about the snow storage areas. Whether widening the pavement of Hale Street within the right of way would impact the site plan. And I guess a question, I'm not sure whether this has come up in staff discussions, but whether. Uh, using the city right of way for snow storage for the government is something we've done in the past.
I can't say, you know, in a practical situation, I don't feel, you know, like what's happening. Generally speaking, we obviously snow storage or public right. By the city, I'm proud of it. Or you leave, I don't know, I haven't since I think that was less important. Here, I think, and I did talk about seeing parents and expectations as far as the sort of light lane, you know, sidewalk. And connections, talking about Hale Street, he was expecting some of that work to happen on the opposite side of the street. But I think generally speaking, it's probably more to make sure that they send that snow storage to develop and all that. By the property as opposed to going to the right way irrespective of what the city ends up doing on Hale Street and stuff hold on that area that.
I guess my my question was that the, I understood that we're probably doing the actual bicycle pedestrian infrastructure on the outside. But we might need to widen the travel in the south side, so there might not be as much space. In the public right of way as you're using for the driveway and the storage.
Right. So I I I missed the fact that. Mr. Sawyer put the snow storage in the right of way, so we'll relocate the snow storage off of the right way, obviously. But in the, any of the aprons along Hale Street that currently exist in the right of way, they're going to have to be backed up, so. When the, if the city were to do that, there would have to be a new order of conditions for the city. Along there and then the the driveways would have to be adjusted accordingly. Steve. As to the driveway backing into, the apron backing into. The the property, that would be a significant expansion, right? There's a big right of way there before the travel path.
So I guess I'm not, I'm not suggesting that the entire light would be taken over.
Right.
But I'm just suggesting that, and I prefaced it by saying, I like the back building is close to the street. But that makes it tighter to get on the street than with the parking spaces. So I was just wondering whether, you know, if you had. A few feet, whether that's going to impact or that's going to work.
Well, I'm gonna let Steve answer that from an engineering point of view, obviously, right away then.
Yeah, so so right now we have from the edge of pavement to our right away line, I think there's about twenty feet, twenty feet, so. You know, I don't, you know, there's highly unlikely they're going to widen that road by more than five feet or so. Maybe even ten feet, but that still gives you ten feet from the right of way to the edge of pavement. Which we could easily pull our radiuses back and 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 reconfigure the apron to meet the needs. Of that, of the city realigned, of of any potential realignment or widening of Hale. I have, I have had a couple, myself, I've had a couple discussions with John Eric White. On this item, and he said at this stage, for, you know, for us to try and change things to. You know, to meet what they they really, we really don't know what's going to happen there yet. Doesn't make sense at all. And I think he agrees with the fact that we have such an expansive area between the edge of pavement currently and the right away line. That we have more than, more than ample room to reconfigure our, our, you know, pull our. Our radiuses back and such in our entry back and still everything would function the same on our property.
Um, I guess with respect to the snow storage, I don't know where there are faces. I think you probably. You probably designed it to have a snow storage area as as far away from the wetlands as as possible.
Well, if you look, those are just two of this, there's snow storage areas around the entire parcel. There's plenty of snow storage here. And then if there's some sort of significant event, you know, like everywhere else, sometimes they'll have to hire somebody to haul it off if they can't find places to push it. But I'm showing, you know, there's, there's no reason you can't store snow in the. In the four bay area, you can just pile snow in there because the intent of the four bay area is to collect. Initial sediment, sediments and such. It's not where the final polishing and treatment is, so that whole area in the rear. We, the only place we can't push it, you can't push it directly into our constructed stormwater wetland on the. On the east side of the property, you can't push snow into that directly, but you can store the snow. Uh, in front of the, you know, anywhere in front of the building, you do, you have some room to the either side of the driveway. Uh, one thing we are going to have to be careful of, I think I had my snow storage overlapping with. Tom's, I think there were dog, the dogwood trees, I think, which we'd have, there is space between them. But if you're hammering snow onto them, we got to be careful about that. So I'll update, I will update the plan to show. Show snow storage areas outside of the public right of way and coordinate it with the landscaping. You know, and typically when they do plow in, if they're coming in to plow. They just plow to the side when they come in and out of the, you know, when you come in and out of the site, in and out of the entry. So there will be.
But snow storage, that's like a wind up or something.
Yeah. I have a reason why we would be hopeful to have that separate landscaping plans and see the snow, have a snow storage.
Yeah, absolutely. We don't, we don't disagree with that at all.
Any other questions?
So, Mr. Chair, from a process point of view, I I won't go through all the procedures, we've submitted that's there on the record. But we we will file before the next meeting, the A and R plan. Right? So we haven't filed officially the A and R plan because you only have twenty-one days to act on it, so we didn't want. To push you into that. So we'll file the A and R plan at the next meeting, so that assuming that we've addressed all of these issues. We, you can approve the A and R plan at the same time you finish up the site plan.
So I had a question about that. Is there, is there a reason why we can't approve this before the A and R?
Um, no, you could, but we would like it done all at the same time because the Conservation Commission would like to see it too. And because they want to issue an order of conditions and know what parcel they're getting.
Because, well, and let me, the other question I had was, in the case of the Conservation Commission. And they accept it without city council approval?
Depends on who you talk to.
Because I'm just, I want, I want to avoid that situation where you're going to city council, the city council, because you're making us.
No, so chapter forty-four, section AC authorizes the Conservation Commission with the approval of the executive body. To accept gifts of land. The city. Has a different process, but that's what the statute says. So, for example, if you're in a town, you don't need to go to town meeting to accept a gift of land for the Conservation Commission. You just need the Board of Selectmen, the executive authority, and the Conservation Commission to allow. So they can do it no matter what, but with, that's the, we want the A and R plan done anyway. Because the site plan is only applicable to this portion of the site. And so regardless, you don't have to have your decision contingent. On the A and R plan, which can have the A and R plan approved because our site plan filings for a lot upfront, so.
Related to that, I noticed on the full plan of the site. That it appears that, I may be misinterpreting the plan. It appears that there's drainage from that site is flowing into the site that's the Conservation Commission. Will be accepted. Is that makes, is that true?
I'm going to have Steve answer the drainage questions. So I don't, I don't know that, I don't think that it is, but I don't know that answer. So Steve, can you, Rick's question was. Are, is there drainage flowing from the developed site, which is our site plan review site? Into the lot that we're going to be donating to the Conservation Commission?
Yeah, so, yes. But, but, but what, what we're required, it, it's typical of any property, any development. There's numerous developments where your stormwater crosses your property line. But that's the whole deal. That's why we do our stormwater calculations is that we don't increase stormwater from our parcel off our lot lines. And so what my, my, my stormwater report is for our parcel, you know, our, our new parcel, not the entire site. And we're not increasing flow off our site.
My, my, I guess my question was, and and you may already be having these discussions with the conservator. You're, you're going to be asking the Conservation Commission to accept a parcel that is accepting. Industrial, stormwater from an industrial site, so I guess, has that come up in the.
Yeah, they, they know that they've seen, they've seen these plans, right? They, they, they've been out there, they've done a sidewalk, they've seen the plans, they know. You know how the wetlands are all working, yes, this is just.
So, so you would prefer to do the A and R at the same time as the site plan. And then I guess my question for Andy is, there are some, because of proposed special conditions in in your, your staff report. That says that. Prior to the issues of building permit for the proposed project, the applicant shall submit to the city council. And he conveys for approval acceptance of building state parts. And prior to the occupancy permit, provided the zoning administrator approves of the recording of deed interest transfer of deed to the city. So if we're, if we're actually going to be acting on. A and R plan at the same time, we're doing the site plan, do we need that first?
Yeah, no, to your point, actually, we're, we're happy to modify or work with this, given the.
What they are simply possible.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with the point that, that we can tweak that, because it doesn't like cover the same. Entire parcel to be contained as one.
Before I open the public hearing. It's gone.
What, isn't it site plan review?
Yes. This is like. Major site. That's okay.
Okay, I will open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to comment or question on this application? Don't see anybody jumping up. Still, we're close about. And I guess what we're looking for at this point is a motion to continue to the next meeting. Is that, is that the case?
I, I think, I think that's fine. You can do a. Let's get a plan and write a week, so the meeting next meeting is the fourteenth. So we can pull the landscape plan off and get that. Fifteen, right, oh, right. Um, so by next Wednesday, yeah, we can do that. And if not, we'll ask for continuance, but I would like to go to the fifteenth, yes.
And and you'll be ready with the. A and R plan and the concert, everything.
Right, the A and R plan is ready, it just needs to be put on a Mylar and an application file.
And just. Sorry, kind of thinking about this. When, so this does need to go, you'll be submitting the A and R plan when you're moving the site plan. But you still need the required, new reports processes to go to the city council?
So I would, what, what we would like to do is, you know, as to the site plan review, if you want to have a condition. Your condition can say that we have submitted. A deed, right, to the city council and the Conservation Commission, not that they have accepted it, right? So I'm finding that because the Conservation Commission is going to have a condition. In their order of conditions that we donate the land in the back also, so. You know, frankly, I don't think you need it at all, but. You can.
Had this, this problem recently.
Yes, we have. So that's why I'm suggesting we submit, not that it gets recorded, because. And our job is to submit. Somebody doesn't want to accept it. You can't say.
Sure, the chairs, the point that you raised, I think you're thinking of a tree that is a tree dream. Uh, he's intended that, the concern that was raised by me, which one pastor was the question of whether or not. Any word of approving or requiring a easement there was putting essentially an obligation on our city department, Department of Public Services to make any improvements. They were rare or other, there was department's operations, something that the executive branch, you know, would be generally overseeing. So anyway, some result here is I reached out to the city of here, who was currently acting as the acting director. For public services and asked for feedback on this particular issue here where there's a limit of. If stormwater that eventually is just leaving the site here, but as Steve pointed out, there's essentially dealing with, with no peak increases at any point on the property line, right? Uh, hey, you know, peak dischargeers or any stop the lot lines. Here, it's the national flow basically happening downstream, and my question for him was. If the city council is taking the land and they're transferring that, carrying it up to the Conservation Commission, which is starting to be actually the typical process. Um, that, that we would, if we had that question arise. He gives an opinion was that he actually built out a perfectly fine, then he wasn't concerned about this or that, and that he were. Being placed on the city or the public services, they do happen to maintain swales of the business park, and this may be something that we're taking a look at. As part of the overall scheme, sort of going forward out there, but they didn't see this as being any, you know, burden on their parks, or speak. Where the larger parcel, toward the back, as, you know, continuation of what is a paramount of what was the swale of the business park. You didn't see that anything usually for that.
Just trying to avoid.
No, I, I, I'm with you. I appreciate that.
So, um, I guess it's a simple, uh, motion we're looking for is to give this to the meeting on.
So moved on. Second.
Um, okay, we'll have to have a little call, um. Paul.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
Don, yes, Richard.
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you very much. And Andy, maybe if you could show that condition would be, that would be great.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we're moving on to general business and, uh, we got a request for release of covenant and text for lane. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you for hearing me. Um, my name is Colleen Nades from Benner and Nicholson. And, um, the reason we're requesting this release of covenant is it was never released in. The sixties when the subdivision was finished and the street was subsequently accepted by the city. So as part of a title search that we did on the conveyance of block, uh, of fourteen Dexter Lane. This came up, so in an effort to just kind of. Clear the, clean the slate and not have any problems for anyone going forward. We had put together a blanket, um, release so that we can report it at the registry and no one else has to. Any, uh, issues with the title.
So, uh, the question that I asked, uh, Andy last week, um, was. So the lot configuration here is not actually, things have ended up last two lots don't exist, yes.
Right.
And so the turnaround at the end, which is shown as an. As a, as a temporary reason for turning circles. Um, it's mostly on city block. Um, and I guess the question is, do we have any concerns about that? I guess.
I, I would know that, I would essentially, you know, say that the effect result that is some of the situation, the city is actually has to call the property.
So, so. I was unclear, actually, Mr. Paul, the covenant.
And you ought to, uh, so this, this is not a typically, uh, this is not, you know, a typically periodic, like closing attorneys who are working for a client. And I don't know why it's missed in some cases and picked up in others. Um, but in turn, closing attorneys will pick up the fact that there's an encumberment of the property. In this case, the fact that there was a. Covenant, in this case, I think it's the notation of the plan as opposed to the center document that we nominated for the registry. We'll sort of get this plan, uh, basically saying that the lot should be sold or transferred, you know, until. Uh, roadways may completed here, uh, you know, as I pointed out, this roadway is made up for decades ago and actually was further accepted by the city council. As a public way, um, so, you know, generally speaking, there, it, it, there shouldn't be, I argue, a much hesitation in releasing. The covenant from the construction of this roadway so long ago, having been accepted by the city council, even if there were to be a debate. Uh, and this would be running back quite a while and a lot of, you know, um, some very basic plans back then that aren't quite as designed, uh, until they're today. But, um, to back in question the construction of that roadway, where the city council actually already accepted it as a public way. Uh, we even do this to hold that, uh, covenant at least. Um, so here, you know, where all the lots perfected and then they had come to requesting one of the lots and we thought it made sense to have this. Lot release actually making clear that it's covering all the lots, residential lots on the street. That have been developed so that all the other lot owners don't have the same effort of, if they're closing. If they're using after, they end up recovering at least that one lot, uh, where here, it would seem, really all the lots should be released from that covenant. Really, we're not trying to run the actual plan.
We're just cleaning it up for everybody.
So, um. I guess what does. I, I, is that clearly, I, I, I hear you said, let's see the note of plan. Are we based, is, is, is the effective art? We need some covenant to. Um, would make the notes in the plan, is that what we're doing?
Uh, it's basically saying that the notes on the plan are satisfied, the one that said, you can't go any further beyond, but until you satisfy the plan with the construction of the roadway. Here, for whatever reason, I, I don't, none of us were here at the time. Uh, whatever reason, that wasn't closed completely, and so there was no actual action later on, where typically we'd have a recorded. Covenant as the, you know, I love a document for the registry. Here, there's a notation of the plan, uh, in this case, uh, it's a similar release space to say. Yes, at this point, we're, we're determining that the roadway was originally, you know, uh, you know, openly equal construction, as a point of the plan with departments. And that's further evidence by the fact that city council followed suit and accepted the street as a public way. Um, so the evidence would seem to suggest that the board is in a position to release the covenant with the concerning with that roadway. Again, here recognizing the city council actually wants the margin accepted at the public way.
I think so. What are you, what are you, your proposed motion?
Uh, I believe so, yes.
Okay. Um, any questions, um, no? So, uh, I guess we'll accept a motion to, uh, approve the request for release of covenant. For all lots on Dexter Lane and authorize the planning board chair to sign the related release of covenant for all lots Dexter.
One second.
One second. Um, okay, we'll call Alden.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Jamie. Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
Ron.
Yeah.
Richard.
Yes.
And Rick, yes. I'm sorry, who, who made the second of that one? We have, uh, two requests for extension. Should we take those up together?
I think it would make sense. I think we have, uh, Mr. Pennell here, uh, online.
Is there a way I can get the signatures tonight and then?
Uh, I, I believe so, yeah, I believe so. The, the one attribution that we have is the chair has to be, um, attested by the city clerk. Uh, and the bottom of that documents, it might be, may make more sense actually for, uh.
I'm pretty sure.
Okay, so we get it, yeah, okay.
Perfect, let's try to look it up. Thank you, I appreciate it then.
Um, yeah, I think that would make sense and I'll, uh, sort of help, uh, I do this here, uh.
So you have the two, uh, requests for extension for seventeen Malcolm Hoyt Road and three Stanley Tucker Drive. Right. Mr. Pennell, you want to address the board, the request?
Yes, hello.
Yes.
Hello. Hi, uh, this is Steven McDows, I'm an attorney at Myrtle Connell. Uh, and I'm here, Attorney Roloff's could not make it this evening. So I'm here in his stag, if you would. Uh, and with me this evening are Jim Zampow and Chris Zampow. Um, so if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Right.
Um, we're here for, of course, as you mentioned, item four B. Uh, which concerns property at seventeen Malcolm Hoyt Road. Uh, the property is located in the industrial one zoning district. And we're here this evening seeking, seeking an extension of the approval of the site plan. The original decision, decision was issued by this board on seven fourteen twenty. And filed in the office of the city clerk on the sixteenth of July of twenty twenty. Uh, and I, I hope you had an opportunity to review the letters, uh, submitted by Attorney Roloffs. Um, as explained in the letter, the approval. Um, is valid through June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, and that's due to the tolling. Uh, from the COVID crisis and the governor's. Uh, declaration of emergency and the special legislation that told all permits. Um, the project, as you may recall, because some of the members of the board were. On the board when the original site plan was approved. Is in addition of approximately nineteen, nineteen thousand eighty-seven square feet to an existing building. At this location at seventeen Malcolm Hoyt Road. Um, so, Mr. Chairman, we're requesting an extension of the site plan approval to June sixteenth. Twenty twenty-five, so that would be a two-year extension. And we're available to answer any questions. Um, it, you know, beyond the letter, if you didn't have an opportunity to review the letter, we can go over that, the rationale for this.
Could you go ahead and, and continue to talk about three Stanley Tucker Drive as well?
I'm sorry?
Could you continue in time about three Stanley Tucker Drive as well?
Okay, um. Well, as I mentioned, um, the approval was. Issued in July of twenty twenty, and that, you know, COVID began in March of twenty twenty and. Not to take everyone back to a dark place, but a lot of things shut down for a good, long period of time. Um, and the. Governor's legis, you know, special legislation for the, um, declaration of emergency that told all permits. Was a recognition of the economic hardships, um, that weren't, of course, just limited to the Commonwealth, but were global. Um, and since we've come out of COVID and the, uh, emergency order. Was terminated in, I believe, June twenty-one. Um, there's been. Uh, supply chain and material price spikes, uh, for construction materials. So all of that has resulted in, um, a delay in the tabling, if you will, of the project, but. The owners are still, uh, intending to construct the project as approved.
Thank you. I guess the, the point of my question was, we're discussing both applications together.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I guess I didn't hear that. Okay. Well, thank you for that. Uh, so the second property. Is three Stanley Tucker Drive, which is pretty much next door. Um, and this property is also, of course, located in the industrial one zoning dist- district. This, the project related to this site plan, uh, is a smaller addition, nine thousand six hundred and eighty-eight. Square feet to the existing building. Uh, and again, we're seeking the extension of the approval of the site plan that was originally issued. On July fourteenth of twenty twenty and filed with the office of the city clerk on the sixteenth of July of twenty twenty. And as described in the letters from Attorney Roloffs, uh, the original approval. With the, uh, tolling by the, uh, emergency legislation during COVID. Was extended by that legislative act through, uh, June sixteenth of this year. Um, but we are requesting respectfully an extension to June sixteenth of twenty twenty-five. Uh, for the same rationale as previously described for the other project. Um, at Malcolm Hoyt Road.
Thank you.
Uh, and, Mr. Chairman, I just want to add, we also submitted. Uh, request for extensions of time with the Conservation Commission, uh, today for the orders of condition. So, thank you. We'll answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions from? Um, aside from. The, uh, tolling, which, which was not saying. To me, the decision in front of us is to divide a two-year extension. My only question on that is. With this two-year extension, if this would have, if this would have been reapply down. Are there any other standards, or by, as an example, to have a stormwater standard change something and such, it would have to be changed, otherwise there are many issues.
Uh, it's a great question, Don. Uh, in this case, no, uh, so I, the office would not have an objection. Uh, extension of time, or in our opinion, it's really just a lot of more time for the other project.
Thank you.
Nothing changed.
And, I don't know, we have somebody to represent.
He was just speaking. Are you going to address the board? Sean.
Nothing has changed. The sites, everything's same.
Yes, understood. Thank you.
Okay, um, there are questions. Uh, could I have a motion on both, um. Seventeen Malcolm Hoyt Road and Stanley, three Stanley Tucker Drive to extend the site plan review permit term. For two years up to including June sixteen twenty twenty five. I'll move that on, thank you. Okay, uh, we'll call Alden.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm gonna abstain from voting on this just because I work with Jeff.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
Um, yes. Richard.
Yes.
Rick, yes, okay. We have your extensions.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, um, the last item under, um, before under updates is approval of this. Of February first, twenty twenty-three meeting, uh, I submitted some comments to Kieran. Are there any other comments or concerns or questions about this? All right, then, uh, we'll call it that. Alden.
Yes.
Yeah.
I wasn't there, so I will abstain.
Um. Yes.
Jamie, yes. Heather.
Yes.
Don, stay. Richard.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Other business in, uh, updates. We've done a couple of things you'd like to bring up.
Um, thank you. Yes, I, um. I, I would, and I'll try to agree. The first one was, uh, as you know, I'm, I'm, I'm the planning board representative for the. Community Preservation Committee, and next year, whatever you, seven or six, I'm assuming Rex is not going to do it. We'll, 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 we'll be here. And it was interesting, because one of the things I wanted to just bring up to you, and actually was coincidentally covered today. And that is. The planning board should be careful if there are instances in a situation. Where we're agreeing or perhaps even implying that we're going to convey lane and. To city, say, well, why is that? Isn't that good? Well, as an example, community preservation committee is now being requested. And one could argue that's the reason for these funds for good, good, good things. Spend fifty-five thousand dollars, provide a new fence and full performance, and some other thing. When this first came up, came, came before it, it's not that we were, were part of that decision. That was never discussed, but if it ever comes up with some. Buying land or doing, or somehow we get involved, I would just caution all of you to say, there's always, there's always perhaps an ongoing cause, so. Just, you know, add it, add a temper on that. Second thing I wanted to mention to you, and I actually spoke to Andy a bit about this. From the Energy Advisor Committee, um, there's, there's been a reasonable amount of discussion on five G. And the, we discussed it, we said it's most appropriate for the planning board and or the, the, the planning director to address this issue. And the issue is, um. That there's some, some deal that we're gonna, that one of these days, we're gonna have all easy antennas every two to three hundred feet. Uh, and, um, if in fact that's the case, there are some communities that have addressed, there's other ways to do it, and they'll. But we'll talk about, we'll destroy this lawn, you can actually put it on the house, that they can get it in the city, et cetera, et cetera, so. Make a long story short, I told the Energy Advisor Committee, we discussed it, was inappropriate for us, uh, in the majority opinion, to discuss this any further. And it should be, you know, what, what to the planning board and or the, the planning office, so. Best of the time on to that one.
Before, before, before you leave that, so what is, what types of actions will you think are necessary?
It would be new zonings. Some, some communities are ready for providing new zoning ordinances. And, and say, if, if you're having the easy antennas, they've got to be concealed, or you've got to put them such on a certain pole and. Do something else, so it, it's aesthetically pleasing that you just don't let the, um, what, the license of the five G put wherever they want. And, and that's kind of a big concern that some members of the EAC, uh, EAC had, and again, you know, it was, in my opinion. The majority opinion is appropriate, pressing, discussing further.
I think you just, just what I hear, a great point, um, and I think this goes to basically smaller and smaller, you know, a bit of being placed out there or distributed, right? Uh, so we are a typical vision, you know, a long time ago, I, far my time here. When the zoning ordinance was amended to add a section for wireless communication facilities. Typically, you think of that as a top, and nowadays, it's a small thing, but it's a lot of trouble. Um, so here, I think we maybe look to amend that particular section to try to cover as much gravity as we could without throwing a ball, you know. The federal agencies that, uh, have, you know. Provides latitude for these, uh, these entities to, uh, put their facilities up, but to know, it's boy, maybe make sure that we simply establish national issues or area. Um, they're, they're in, you know, so to speak, and that's the kind of thing you'll see in order of being charged or sort of locations that they find a whole gate or high, you know. Equipment, uh, and, you know, in, that would seem sort of, uh, tower or something, as opposed to having, you know, and exposed. Uh, there will be some situation that, based on the, you know, anywhere, the moment was where that was, well. Um, and they've delivered all these stuff, thanks. done all these things, except they won't, it's all possible, probably right away, but to the extent that, I guess, I think it's a, it's a, it's a, you know, they, they, they work, you know, and they, they, although I think you're, I agree with you, it's been the more of a zoning, like, or that, 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 in particular, you know, if I goes out on that, I agree.
And the last, so everyone will go home, is again, on the energy advisory committee, they would, they would like to see something where there's greater energy conservation and more net zero, et cetera. And we can't do that now because it's not allowed by Massachusetts legislation. There, there's some other building codes that, that, that's not the purview of the planning board. But when it comes to special permits, you know, can the planning board do something more stringent? And the answer actually, there is a case, case law or precedent such as you can do it. This is a, this is a, a big, big step in my opinion, and I believe that the energy advisory committee would like sometime coming before you and discuss this. In addition, they, they, they started discussion with the resilience, because the resilience committee would also like to have certain wants or desires in some of these special permits. So I think they're going to be coordinated and I think they're going to come before you and eventually also come before the, the city council on some of the items here. So I just wanted to give you, stay tuned for, for something on that. Now, to me, there is nothing, and again, it's got to be a planning board decision, to say the planning board could, for a reasonable size project, to say, we would like you to provide voluntarily, voluntarily, a, a, provide a questionnaire or provide our answers to, did you do everything possible for energy conservation? Did you do some type of a life cycle plus analysis? What was your discount rate? You picked it to down, rebates, and then renew inflation reduction, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That, to me, is entirely possible because you simply say, would you do it? They can say, no, they do go on to the next subject for discussion. And again, that would be up to the energy advisory committee when, when they meet with you. So again, just, just heads up. Not sure what they're going to do there. Thanks. Just to go on that, I was in those conversations about the last event here. And I've been working with the resilience committee on a questionnaire, and he has been through about looking at site conditions and resilience and the green infrastructure and so forth. And at some point, that committee is going to come to us, I would, and, you know, ask us to be looking at an informational questionnaire, checklist, similar to what Don is talking about, the energy, and you know, it's just, we're going to have to decide how much more want to ask other applicants. But the benefit of the questionnaire is it may help get people thinking about foods. So this may, may go in that direction, even where we haven't put the standards into our regulations, where you know, as the case of some of the building energy type things that I was talking about, we don't, there's a more, that, or, certain, there are these situations where you're special. So that's something that will come in before us. Something we've been working on for the year or so. It'll, it'll come, it'll come when it comes.
If I could just supplement, I'd love to do the comment today. And generally speaking, I'm in support of all the sort of more range initiative for energy conservation for the design scene. Like, both the idea of asking the questions of advocates, the questions about a little better, but also maybe at some point, obviously, you're backing the standard themselves because where it actually tells certain things that are responsible or whatever. This goes a little bit to, there's a city ordinance, you know, following facilities that are done by the city, and the city has to basically show that the city council, the, the project managers have to show the city council how much of the, trying to reach a net zero energy usage in the building. So we saw that, a net zero plan for the West End Fire Station, and a net zero for the market, any market visitor building, although we don't have, we don't have, they just had a design, net zero. So that's how we will go. And I think the essence here is, if you're trying to get the private sector to try to head that direction as well, you know, whether the first asset question, they're, standards. The one I'm sharing on, I guess, I would say is, I would not be surprised, depending on how, how much, you, you just questionnaire, forget the standards for saying, if we try to have questions that we add to our application, I would not be surprised if there's a party or two out there, everybody say, well, you know, your sixteen-page, you know, questionnaire requires X, Y, and Z, and is, you know, over or is, or is beyond the scope of what the board, you know, required the ordinance. And so that, my suggestion there is that, you know, if we're not going to get a debate about that, trying to do it as simple as possible and visually, you know, something that folks could do, whereas if you want to be more involved, might you consider the possibility of, one, actually, some of those votes are represented, or, or two, maybe you can go back to the city council and make it more clear where, where has authority, you know, even, even, and I don't, as an injectors myself, but even where, where might be called, the patient, not necessarily because of the specific action, but the guy would say, tell us what you have done and walk us through that, you know. Even that, I've seen folks sometimes, we actually had some time ago, I'm forgetting, a long, a long, a few, a couple years back, you know, basically, that's on our application forms, trying to make it clear where certain things had been provided, sort of the grant, such a patient, words, and meetings, and trying to not make it overly complicated by going to the council, preventing where there's, but the application form itself, to clarify what's needed by the board. We even had, you know, where the, the, well, you know, we're, we're concerned that that's all the rest of the advocate. So my, my note there is that I supported, you know, concept, just want to recognize the fact that it's a, it may be a balancing act where at a certain point, the private threshold would be have, you know, the private sector objecting to what we're asking for, the information, or maybe later effective regulations, and maybe needing to, depending on where we are with that, on that threshold, needing to go to the city council or amendment to ordinance is because there's a, or, you know, effectively seen with authority by the, 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 the but generally speaking, I support that issue.
Any questions on that? Just looking ahead at our coming meetings, next meeting we'll be having this twenty-one mark of wait for the grandees. Do you think there will be, we want to, we want to pick up the discussion of the change to the IPI ordinance. Do you think that it's reasonable to have some response in terms of analysis by that meeting, or would you like to have a split for another, another week?
I guess when we, when we use presence analysis, and we talk about, we've asked, there's a question we're asked about, like, what are the beta plots that could be developed versus things, you know, what are the applications that we receive today, how much money did that actually provide to the city, you know, is relatively small under that age, or, or all around the city, for the, yeah, some basic information like that. And, yeah, we can circle back with, or in the, we should be able to circle back with some summary of that information there. As far as, you know, basically, sort of a lot of what I'm trying to be the speaker to, which is almost going to get an analysis of a million different, you know, scenarios. That, to me, I think, this injection there almost seem to be, you know, you could spend a year or two, like, a study like that. And then here, we're talking about, you know, some basic information, if I can help, your framework, but if you're trying to do an analysis of every square foot of every building that out now, and how those things, you think, are very, that's an over of process.
I guess, I guess I was sort of thinking about, sort of what Jennifer was talking about, is take ours or pay us, and what happens if they were working in office. So we're going to take a couple of the case studies, say, what does this mean?
Sure. I, I don't know whether or not every board member here will, will satisfy that those are the exact examples that we're looking for, you know. But I do believe I have confidence that that, or they will be able to look to, I think that's all right there, that you just look right at. But to Jennifer's earlier point, look at that and say, you know, here's what we, we think for someone would actually, actually develop with the, or bad, you know, or, you know, here's what we think for someone would be, and if we can think of a few others to pull out there. If you have a suggestion, which we happen to, to talk to, or the chair, or other, but it is, so you guys have a particular focus in trying to, you know, think about that, or that would, even that would, but I think Jennifer was also pregnant, pointing out that it, it may not be as a grievous burden if folks are not actually, more of a, be required by the, the residential, whereas one of them, they're trying to, that, 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 everything will be tagged in terms of that.
So it's reasonable to think that we could be wrapping this up at the next meeting?
If you're, I, I believe so, yes.
Do you know any other applications in the coming building?
Not that I'm aware of, no. And it was a question that I actually about the.
So, so we are going to be, as everybody probably knows, we're seeing a short term out in this time and to us. And we're going to have a joint public hearing with, with the community, the public community of the board, yes, on April nineteenth.
Right. Correct. We are, based on the feedback and counselors, we are now expecting, we always try to, by the way, use the planning boards for every meeting night, there's only hearings, because it all died of you, or you are expected to generally be here. So we asked the three plan, the three city council members to join the planning board that night. So rather than creating another, I think, a hearing. So the nineteenth, fifteenth of the day in front of me, that's the first day I think of.
So that was the next question is, you know, to me, that's a, are we joining?
We try to avoid holidays and, sorry, just, it may be beneficial here or logical to cancel it as opposed to having.
Or, yeah, or even if we can. You want to, we're trying to have a late vote on the nineteenth, because, no, that's going to be, we're, so if we can bump something later to, to the person who did pay, or if we can squeeze something in.
Yeah. Understood.
That would be safe. So then be able to, can't possibly cancel.
I believe that's going to be possible, and I don't have people on mission, and understood that, 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 or, or, so I guess I would say, and just maybe the zoning here, the short term, let me, but again, I don't know around, but I, I think, you know, maybe the better situation now, the nineteen, this, this area, it's something that's been there six times, tried it, but, but after a lot of that, the city councils had about this particular, we'll take it up again on the nineteen, we'll, and, 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 and we'll shuffle things around the dates before and after, so we're not necessarily overlapping on the short term, I think, this is going.
Do you have anything else?
Oh, no. The one thing I was, I mentioned was that I did get word late today in the, just like the governor, given an extension in twenty twenty-five, I forget the exact date, but twenty twenty-five for the vote meeting allowance. So even though at this point, we're doing a hybrid essentially in person with the remote access, even to, right reserved, but wanted to, like, some of our other boards are prepared to do, given the pandemic, they have been, some of the boards have been having a vote holding, even some like the reservation committee is being, hold the vote, hold it, for, I guess, very efficient, I think, I, I don't, certainly, but here, if the planning board wants to, the CBA, the city council, the planning board, what I rarely see doing it as hybrid, you know, and probably will, say it that way, but just plain, no, we would have the latitude to have a point of a vote meeting as well as a, a first meeting or a hybrid meeting for twenty twenty-five.
Actually, one thing that I that occurred to me, to, to, very frustrating, and I, I wonder whether it is, it is possible for us, I mean, I recognize that some of our board members sometimes can't be, but I wonder if we could be less flexible with applicants, because, you know, several times I couldn't hear what people were saying. It was just, maybe, the engineers.
In terms of them being.
In terms of them being.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a great point. I, I could talk to you, and I, she's had a little bit more dialogue with this particular meeting, so forth. But I, I certainly told people, and I certainly, I think that two of us can try and go a little more strongly than anybody who tried to, I would necessarily say we could, with them, you know, but I would definitely say, look, the bottom line is, it's hard to hear folks, and you're going to run into problems for, for any of your clients, if there's any communication issues. It's certainly much easier, easier, in the road than it is to areas, I swear, you know, as we go along. So we, we can certainly let her know that, that it's in her own interest, and, and then we strongly suggest they may impart that to the board, because, you know, the ladies are.
It also, it also seemed that several people couldn't understand what I was saying.
Yes, and in both directions. Typically, what we have found is, in the audio, everything sort of works fine, Jared is speaking, I would say, except that the audio in the room here, it's sometimes we have problems hearing folks at home, that actually ends up being very, like, most of the problems that I have seen have been, folks at home have a really hard time hearing, whether it's the council chambers or here, hearing what's happening in the road, dialogue, and that's where we find amplified voices, you know. But unfortunately, I've been trying for something here now, since the pandemic, trying to have a bit better equipment, you know, public hearing, like, these cameras, and we're still losing the temporary equipment, which, if you hadn't noticed earlier tonight, this happened, it was all the time, but the equipment actually almost didn't work. It was starting out, but you know, we brought in these issues periodically, you know, trying to avoid, the planning office staff, or my other departments, because personal meetings happen to act as, like, people always problem solve things that aren't really, that are made away, but this equipment is having to be older, and so the goal, I will, I guess, be to have the free priority, even space, you know, here, like this, not build it, like, it's, we don't have these audio issues, but for now, to your point, we should probably have at least all the applicants and representatives in the room.
Somebody else have any, anything to do with that? One, two, one? I just love this. I'd accept a motion to.
A vote to Jared?
Second. Second.
Okay, why don't we call overnight? Alden?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.